Who's the next one? Oh, you're gonna win that one. That should be easy.
Good evening, everyone. If you could take your seats. Thank you, thank you. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular city council meeting for October 7th, 2025. Glad we have a good, full house. Please join me as we say our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, infinite and everlasting.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brando Cruz is excused this evening. Councilmember Melissa Lamatina.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington.
I'm here. A report on closed session, confirmation for reportable actions, Ms. Teresa Highsmith.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session this afternoon to discuss three closed session matters. The first was anticipated litigation, one case. Direction was provided to legal counsel and staff. The second item was a conference with real property negotiators regarding APN 057020023, and direction was provided to staff. The last closed session item was also a conference with real property negotiators regarding properties listed as APNs 057090065, 057120036, 059020044, 059020044, 059020043, 057120017, 05743011, I'm sorry, 001, and lastly, 059430002. And direction was provided to staff and legal counsel, and no action was taken. And that's the end of my report. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Highsmith. And now, moving on to our proclamations and presentations. Tonight, we have three proclamations and appointments for our youth commissions this evening. We'll start off with the first proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Do we have a recipient for... Hey, how are you? Yes, to the podium, and I'll read the proclamation, and then you can give us your words back, and then we'll take a photo with you. Reading the proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas News Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Services is commemorating the 44 years of service to survivors of domestic violence in Napa County, having opened the first confidential safe house on October 5th, 1981, and began providing safety to those escaping abuse. And whereas, every year since 1989, the United States Congress has proclaimed October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, renewing our country's commitment to standing against domestic violence and meeting the needs of survivors. And whereas, the next Domestic Violence Awareness Month is about raising awareness and uplifting the needs, voices, experiences of our survivors. This year's national campaign of "With Survivors Always" emphasizes a commitment to partnering with survivors advocating for their rights and providing continuous support, safety, and solidarity. And whereas, domestic violence is a public health concern that impacts the well-being and success of individual community members, as well as the community as a whole. Data shows that nearly 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men in the United States report experiences severe physical violence from an intimate partner in their lifetime. While others, while nearly half of the United States adults have experienced psychological aggression such as humiliating or controlling behaviors from their partners, domestic violence can cause severe physical and emotional distress for survivors who are more likely to become suicidal and lose economic opportunities from abuse. Children who witness abuse are likely to experience abuse themselves and are often used to control other family members, which can have lifelong impacts in their mental health. Aside from the obvious physical and emotional trauma inflicted, domestic violence contributes to over 10% of all the intentional violent deaths, not including suicide, and costs America's over $8 billion a year. And whereas, the observation of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we show that our community is committed to supporting survivors and working toward prevention of domestic violence among future generations. And whereas, News provides service to over 1,700 people in Napa County, including providing direct client and shelter services 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Now therefore, I, Pierre Washington, on behalf of the city council, do proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage all residents of American Canyon to honor domestic violence survivors and those who serve them this month and throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Washington. Is it okay if I say a few words?
Yes, ma'am.
So, my name is Tracy Lamb. I'm the Executive Director of News Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Services. And I know that was a very long proclamation, probably longer than most that you read, but I really do appreciate you spending the time to inform the community about what domestic violence is about. And so, on behalf of News, I would like to thank the City of American Canyon and your Board of Supervisors for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This year's campaign calls for us to stand with survivors always and to explore what it means to be a true partner with survivors in their pursuit of safety, support, and solidarity. And I want to mention that there really are some amazing people who stand by us on this issue of domestic violence in this community. And the Seroptimists are one of those groups that do that year after year. And so, I want to recognize the work that they're doing. And they're also a group of ambassadors in this community that are educating the community on our behalf. And so, I think this community really does show up for survivors, and we very much appreciate it. I also want to recognize that survivors of the LGBTQ+ community and immigrant communities are facing escalating stress and fear for their safety. Whether at work, or school, or attempting to seek services, we ask that you join us in caring for all survivors and help us to send the message that it is safe to come to seek support at News, that all of our services are 100% confidential, and all survivors are welcome. And we will not share their information with anyone or any agency without their informed written consent. Our services are free and voluntary. We have suffered some terrible losses in Napa County due to domestic violence in this last year. We had two domestic violence homicides. And in our neighboring Sonoma County, they've seen a huge increase in very violent situations. I think they had 15 domestic violence-related homicides this last year. And so, we all recognize just how dangerous this situation can be. In honor of those that we've lost and all survivors, we're hosting a candlelight vigil on October 23rd at 6:00 PM at Veterans Memorial Park in Napa. And we invite each and every one of you to come and join us to stand up for survivors. If you or someone you know is in an unsafe relationship, please call our 24-hour helpline at 255 NEWS. And we thank you for your continued support of survivors throughout the Napa Valley.
That's okay. Just real quick, the Seroptimists of American Canyon is here, and we are working in partnership with News. We have an awareness campaign going. These are lawn signs that are available for the small price of $25 for you to put in front of your house to increase awareness about domestic violence. The money we raise will go to hope bags that News puts together for people who are leaving a situation. They very often leave with nothing but the clothes that they have on their back. And the hope bags have clothes, toiletries, gift cards, things that are necessary for a person to survive. So, we encourage everybody, if you're a Napa County resident, to come see us, and we'll make sure you get a sign.
Thank you. And real quick, Tracy, I just wanted, we're gonna come up in the front and take a picture with you as well, but I just want to say thank you for the things that you do. The dignity that you leave a lot of these victims with is by far just amazing what you do for them. I've had several people come talk to me about your program, your team, and how they felt comfort, safe, and it's because of the hard work you do. And to the Seroptimists, I've been to a couple of your trainings that you've had, and you're doing amazing things, just educating people on the importance of just knowing the resources that are available to them. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all again. Next, we have the Filipino-American History Month. And I'm sure we have quite a few recipients, so feel free to go up. Glad you're all here. I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll allow opportunity for whoever wants to speak to speak. And I know we have singers too, right? Okay, okay. Actually, just last week, we had the Donaldson Elementary School out here, and we gave out some gavels, and they were shown the importance of how to make everybody get quiet. And it worked! So, I'm gonna read this proclamation for the Filipino-American History Month for October 2025. Whereas, in 2009, the United States Congress recognized October as Filipino-American History Month in the United States. And whereas, the Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian-American group in the nation and the third-largest ethnic group in California. And whereas, the celebration of Filipino-American History Month in October commemorates the first recorded presence of a Filipino in the content of the United States, which occurred on October 18, 1587. That's 1587. His name was, and I'm gonna hack the name up, I know I am. So, it's Luzones Indios. Am I saying that correctly? Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Came ashore from the Spanish gallon New Tresha, Nortor- Nono- Senora de Espinaza. Correct? Okay. And landed on what is now Marrow Bay in California. And whereas, through the development of these three institutions of Filipino-American Studies, Filipino-American National Historical Society, and the Filipino-American History Month, we recognize how Filipino-Americans have initiated collective grassroots efforts to ensure that their voices are heard and that their experiences are recognized and their history is told. Whereas, we acknowledge those major historical markers in our community, and we encourage Filipino-Americans and their allies across the country to collectively celebrate Filipino-American History Month. With these legacies in mind, and whereas, we recognize the many ways the Filipino-Americans have made significant economic contributions and have other profound positive influences on our community through their strong commitment to family, faith, education, hard work, culture, and service. And whereas, in acknowledging the many legacies created by the Filipino-American across the United States and in American Canyon, we encourage our community members to be enriched by the cultural contributions of our Filipino-American friends and neighbors for many decades to come. Now therefore, I, Pierre Washington, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Filipino-American History Month in the City of American Canyon. And thank you for all you do.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carla, and I'm part of Frendores Manila Munchies. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you all for being here as we celebrate Filipino-American History Month, a time to honor our stories, our culture, and the generations of Filipinos who've helped shape this country. Filipino-American History Month reminds us that our community's presence in the US goes back over 400 years to 1587, when the first Filipinos arrived in California. Since then, our people have contributed so much, from education and healthcare to art, food, and public service. But beyond the history books, Filipino-American History Month is also about celebrating who we are today. That's exactly what Manila Munchies is all about. This year's theme, Global Pinoy, showcases how our culture continues to evolve, blending traditional Filipino roots with new influences from around the world, just like our dishes and community itself. The best part about Manila Munchies is that it gives back. A portion of the proceeds from the event will go towards supporting the Filipino clubs at American Canyon High School and American Canyon Middle School. These students represent the next generation of Filipino-Americans who will continue to carry our culture forward, and your support today helps make that possible. We're also incredibly grateful for the partnership and support of the City of American Canyon, who continue to uplift our Filipino community and help make events like this possible. Their collaboration reminds us that when we work together, our culture and our city both grow stronger. We're also excited to keep the celebration going. On November 8th, we'll be hosting another community event at the Boys and Girls Club, Kamayan and Comedy, an evening that brings people together the Filipino way through food and laughter. So, as we celebrate Filipino-American History Month today, let's celebrate that every meal shared, every story told, and every connection made keeps our heritage alive. Maraming salamat po, and let's continue to celebrate our culture with pride, joy, and unity. We hope to see you on Saturday, October 11th, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Shenandoah Park. I would like to introduce to you a few students who are members of the Filipino Club at American Canyon Middle School and High School who will be singing the Philippine National Anthem. So, these students will be singing the National Anthem at the event on Saturday as well.
I would ask if they're gonna sing the National Anthem, that we should all stand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bayang magiliw, pralas na sila.
And we'll go up and take a picture.
Very serious now.
All right, kids. Do all of the community members have their photos? All right, everyone, look at me. One.
Can we fit it?
Three cheese. One more. One, two, three.
Are we doing another picture or no? And then we can do another picture.
Because mostly they are kids. Yeah, you're my lead, you're my interest.
We have one more comment. We'll have one more comment by the President of the Phil-Am, Jodel Cruz. He is the President of the Phil-Am for American Canyon.
Thank you, Mayor Pierre, Vice Mayor Mark, and the rest of our... City Council... Brando, my cousin, Cruz.
Your cousin.
My brother. Councilor Brando, Councilor David, and Councilwoman Melissa. Sir Jason, good evening. Attorney Teresa, and ma'am. Pardon me, I don't know your name. So, I'm Jodel Cruz. I'm a... And sir Juan, good evening, sir. My name is Jodel Cruz. I'm the President of Phil-Am 2022 to 2023 to 2025. Sorry. So, I'm the President of Phil-Am since that time up to today. Because we have a new one, Mr. Elmer Manaid, anyway. I will say something about our group. Thank you, City of American Canyon. As a proud member of the Filipino-American community and a past President of Phil-Am, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to the City of American Canyon for recognizing and honoring our community during Filipino-American History Month. The contributions of the Phil-Am community, past and present, are truly inspiring and remarkable. From culture and service to leadership and resilience, our story is woven into the fabric of this city and this nation. Thank you, American Canyon, for celebrating our heritage and standing with us in pride and unity. This recognition means so much to all of us. Mabuhay ang Filipino-American community. Maraming salamat po, at magandang gabi.
And Jodel, the Filipino community means a lot to us as well, and thank you for all you do for our city.
Thank you.
The next item is number five. It's the proclamation for the Wall of the Hills. Do we have a recipient? This group for the Wall of Hills is one of the hardest-working groups that I can say I witnessed over the last few months in preparation for our celebration. So, I'll read the proclamation, and if you want to provide some feedback... Oh yeah, Beth, get up there. Okay, I'll read the proclamation. The Wall that heals week, October 16th through the 19th, 2025. Whereas, the Wall of Hills is a traveling three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam Veteran Memorial in Washington, DC, accompanied by a mobile education center, offering the community a chance to remember, honor, and heal. As since its debut in 1996, the Wall of the Hills has visited hundreds of communities across the nation, creating a space for veterans, families, and citizens to reconnect with the names, the stories, the sacrifices of those who served while fostering education and understanding the Vietnam War's impact on individuals, on the families, and communities. Whereas, Vietnam Veteran Memorial Fund's mission is to honor and preserve the memory of those who have served and to dedicate and educate all generations about the sacrifices made by service members and their loved ones. Whereas, we recognize the special importance of this monument coming to American Canyon between October 16th and 19th, 2025, which gives our community, including Vietnam veterans, their families, the residents, a space to reflect, remember, and give thanks to this meaningful way. And whereas, Vietnam veterans from American Canyon And whereas Vietnam veterans from American Canyon and Napa County, whether still among us or remembered, made sacrifices both abroad and at home, and their courage and service are part of our city's heritage. And whereas it is fitting that American Canyon welcomes the Wall of the Hills not only in a ceremonial way, but to open the hearts, to honor those and their stories, to learn and to heal together as a community. And whereas we invite all citizens, community organizations, schools, veterans, groups, and local leaders to participate in the ceremonies, visit the exhibit, and stand together in remembrance, gratitude, and healing. Now therefore, I, Pierre Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do proclaim October 16th through the 19th, 2025, as the Wall That Heals Week in American Canyon in honor of all Vietnam veterans, those who did not return, and those who remain missing in the gratitude of their families, whose sacrifice and strength have woven into the stories of our nation. Thank you, and thank you for participating and putting this event on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are extremely pleased to be up here and honored this evening to accept this proclamation on behalf of our committee. We would like to just let everybody know that the Wall, the Wall That Heals is coming to American Canyon starting on October 14th. We will be hosting a Welcome Home Parade here in American Canyon, which will be starting off in Vacaville, where the Wall That Heals will be traveling from Clovis, California into American Canyon. If you would like to join us, we will be welcoming the trailer into American Canyon, down American Canyon Road, and Elliot, on Elliot Road into Independence Park around 1:30, 1:45. The event does kick off on October 16th with a Welcome Home Ceremony at 6:00 p.m. in Independence Park, followed by an in-memory ceremony on Sunday at 6:00 p.m. at Independence Park, and then it closes on, excuse me, on Saturday, excuse me, Saturday, October 18th at 6:00 o'clock, and then closes on Sunday at the 19th at 2:00 p.m. We did apply to bring the Wall That Heals to American Canyon. Out of 145 applications, we were chosen to be one of the 31 stops throughout the United States, and we are the only location in Northern California this year. So this is a very big honor for us. It's a regional event, so we are inviting everybody within the region, within Northern California, to come out and see the Wall That Heals. If you are not familiar with it, it is the replica of what you would see in Washington, D.C. That features the 58,000 names on the wall of all the service members that served and lost their lives in that war. So please come out, we have an amazing program. It is open from October 16th and the 19th, 24 hours a day. On the 18th, there is a pretty special evening where we will be turning the wall from its regular ambient lighting to teal for PTSD awareness. And Congressman Mike Thompson will be one of our keynote speakers that evening. So that's even special because he actually did serve in Vietnam War. And I also want to do a special shout-out to one of our committee members who also did serve in Vietnam, which is Beth Marcus. So thank you for your service. I know that you still served. And so also Hugh also is a veteran, and our new member of our staff, who is Broderick, he also served in the Navy and he's a veteran as well. So thank you for your service. So thank you again, and again, we are truly honored to be able to do this and bring this event. And I would be remiss to not also acknowledge our other committee members that could not be here this evening. They're either on vacation or just have other commitments. And then our ad hoc subcommittee, which features our mayor and our council member Cruz. So thank you again for your help and support throughout this event. It's been truly phenomenal.
We'll go up there and take a picture so we can have Councilmember Cruz in the picture in the corner. Now let's move on to item number six, the appointment of the youth commissioners and the oath of office.
They need to appoint them, actually. Mayor Washington, if we could get a motion and a vote so that we could do a minute order, and then I could do the oath of office.
Okay, can I entertain a motion to accept these youth commissioners and the oath of office?
I am happy to make a motion to appoint all five of the youth commissioners. Do you need the names?
I can read them, if you would like me to read them.
I can ruin, yes, because I'm sure I will butcher some of the names.
So we're adopting a minute order, appointing youth commissioners, Abesenia Belvin and Royce Hall to the Planning Commission, Sanaya Shandy and Charles Plummer V. to Parks and Community Services Commission, and Catherine Bit to the Open Space Act of Transportation and Sustainability Commission.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So for the oath of office tonight, we're gonna actually do all of yours at the same time. If you would all please raise your right hand, and then you'll be repeating after me. But I'm gonna say "I," and then each one of you needs to say your name into the microphone so that everyone can hear you online as well. And then the rest of it, you'll just say all together, okay? You ready? So "I."
"I, Catherine Bit."
"Royce Hall."
"Sonia Chandy."
"Charles Plummer."
"Abesenia Belvin."
Thank you. Do solemnly swear or affirm
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will, wait a moment, sorry, against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
We just swore in the future leaders of our community. At this time, I'd like to open a public comment for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. I have three minutes to make your statement. We have a timer, and the clerk will time you.
Yep.
Do we have any cards?
I do, I have Michael Mandaros.
Michael.
Good evening, Mayor Washington, Vice Mayor Joseph, council members, and members of the community. My name is Michael Mandaros, a parent of two seniors and one sophomore at American Canyon High School. I'm here on behalf of the American Canyon High School instrumental music boosters to invite you to our up-and-coming American Canyon Band Review on Saturday, November 8th, 2025. The annual event is one of ACH's instrumental music's biggest fundraisers of the year. It showcases the hard work, discipline, and talent of our student musicians, as well as the strong community spirit that supports them. The fundraising goes towards the instruments and uniforms of the students involved in the marching band and any student enrolled in the music program at the high school. The uniforms that they are currently using right now are coming up to 15 years old. So things, you know, need to be funded, as well as the need of repairs of their equipment, as well as the instruments that they use. This will help to go towards the repair, as well as to help to sustain the music program. In the past three years, we've held this competition actually at the Napa Memorial Stadium, as this competition was initially called the Napa Valley Band Reserve. This was the continuation of the tradition that Bill Gant, the storied instrumental music director at Vintage High School, started 30 years ago. The torch was passed on to Brendan Day at the current music director at American Canyon High School. Currently, ACHS is the only high school within the Napa Valley that has a program where students can competitively compete against one another, against other schools in the Napa Valley. After the feedback we received from parents and the community, we are entering a new tradition to bring this competition to American Canyon. Rather than having it in Napa Memorial Stadium, we're bringing it to the Wolfden Stadium inside of ACHS. We want to make this event a tradition for the current high school and future high school schoolers intending ACHS. This is an all-day event, beginning with the morning event, the parade competition, where we will be having a competition along Silver Oak Trail from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It's a free family event where spectators can view the competing bands along Silver Oak Trail in front of Canyon Oaks Elementary School to cheer on the bands. The competition then continues within the stadium from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at the, at the American Canyon Wolfden Stadium, where we have the competing bands coming from Northern California Chico, up to the state of Oregon, and all around. This event wouldn't be possible without the community's support. We offer a variety of sponsorship opportunities, and this year we are in need of trophy sponsors to help recognize these achievements of these outstanding students, as well as any donation going towards the ACH music program. We also would invite the community to help us, to help us volunteer. We need the community assistance, this is why we brought it to American Canyon, so that you can volunteer your time and your effort to help out all these high school students. So for more information to become a sponsor or how to volunteer, please visit our website at www.ACHmusic.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. I have Yvonne Beginsky.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm ready for cake. Yeah, sometimes we have cake after all this. Like some cake, please.
We'll have it at the next meeting.
I didn't have a chance to be at the last city council meeting, but I did watch you all online on YouTube, and I had a few comments I just wanted to tell you. Councilmember Mark Joseph and Lamatina were at the Climate Action Committee meeting, but the others might be able to use some of this information. There was some concerns about the burden of electrifying homes that was mentioned at the meeting, and I'd like to address that because I just recently electrified my home, and I want to bring that to your attention because I'm an ordinary person living in a working-class neighborhood, and I do not have money to do fancy gadgets and widgets. However, last year when I tried to switch insurance companies, the insurance company required that I buy a new roof. They said, "You've had your roof for 25 years, we cannot give you insurance until you switch and buy a new roof." So that cost me $15,000 to buy a new roof. That's the cost of maintaining a home. You gotta keep it up to date, you gotta keep it fixed, that's the, that's the cost that I have to accept. This year I had to do some other changes in my home, and when I started putting it together, I realized that I could turn off the gas in my home and go to total electrification. The first thing I started with was an induction stove, I removed my gas stove out of the house. The reason I removed my gas stove was I didn't realize that all the time I was raising my kids in the house, that I was putting methane, benzene, and nitrous oxide into the house from the gas. I also read that that gas stayed in my house even after I turned off my stove, and was even could be found in the back bedrooms. Guess what I developed about 20 years ago? Asthma. That's when I looked up to see how many people in Napa have asthma. The figures that California, Breathe California came up with is 26.7% of Napa County residents have asthma. Compare this to 14.8% in the rest of California. So I started looking at my gas fireplaces, I started looking at my gas water heater, and I removed everything gas in my house and I replaced it. I even turned off my gas furnace and my HVAC system and put in a mini-split. Now I panicked because I expected my electrical bill to be off, off the grid. But what happened was my electrical bill was about $129 a month, and I had no gas bill at all. So what I'm saying is it can be very reasonable, I just want to bring that to your attention. I just did it, and if you'd like to speak to me about it, I'd be happy to give you the information I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne, and thank you for leading by example.
I have Gina Griggs.
Hello, good evening, council, city manager, directors, and staff, and community members. Oh, and hi, Brent. And my name is Gina, and I'm a community member, I'm a Parks and Community Services Commissioner, and a board of director on American Canyon Community Cats. And I was gonna present to you tonight about cats, but now we're gonna save that for November. So this is public record that that should be November 18th. Pretty pleased and thank you. And so, I just can't help myself, when I'm here, there's always something to talk about. So I would like to again go on the record to please request trash cans throughout the Watson Ranch neighborhood so that I can stop seeing trash and doggy poop bags littered along the sidewalk of this new and beautiful neighborhood. And as we enter the winter months and come into daylight savings time, I would like to again request ground lighting for safety throughout our neighborhoods where we have mature trees, because you cannot see when you go walking in the evening, except in Watson Ranch where the trees are tiny. And then I also would like to request blinking stop signs to maybe encourage people a little bit more to notice them and actually stop at them. And I would like to also suggest that we look at some regulations around e-bikes and e-scooters on our sidewalks, because when you're walking, you cannot hear them, and they do not have bells, and they do not notify you that they are behind you, and it's an accident waiting to happen. It's happened to me many times. Wow, I have a minute and 24 seconds left. Let's see, we saved a lot of cats this year. Yeah, okay. I'll give it back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gina.
I have no other cards, and no one is online, so it's just us.
Okay, thank you. At this time, our close open... Oh. Leon.
Sorry, you call usually call for people who are in the audience as well. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I think I got that right, didn't I? Okay, good. I just wanted to compliment on the activities going on in the city. That shade structure at Northampton Park, wow. I mean, just thank you for putting that together. It's used a lot, basketball and children on the playground, but there's no place for anybody who's mining them or wants to attend in the shade. So, it's a beautiful thing to have there. Also, double big wow on all the pavement that's going on here. My goodness. Rancho Del Mar, all the streets, the Melbourne Sidewalk. There's actually now a safe route to school. You can get see from there to Donaldson Way and all the way down to Napa Junction School, Donaldson Way School and the middle school. And we had a great time with the Fire District Open House. A lot of people attended. It was just very informational. But the big thrill was the helicopter. Yes, it landed on the park out there, Shenandoah Park. Actually, I got a chance to go sit in the helicopter. Fly it, darn it. But it's a beautiful operation, and I know Fire District staff, Chief Belli, knows they've been very diligent on pursuing that as a way to enhance our ability to respond to emergencies. So, it was just a beautiful flight taking off. So, I thank you for all the what we've achieved and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Leon. I'm gonna scan the room this time before I say I'm gonna close it. No one else? I'll close a public comment, and then I'll return to council for any agenda changes. We have six items on consent item.
I'll move to adopt a consent calendar if there's no agenda changes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lametina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to public hearing, where we do not have any public hearing items this evening. So, I'll move to business items, where we have two business items. Number 13, Community Grant Program Policy. It appears like it'll be Allie Akita presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and council. American Canyon has had a longstanding history of supporting local nonprofit organization programs, services, and events that enhance the quality of lives of our residents. The council adopted the original Community Grant Program Policy on March 21st, 2020. As part of this year's fiscal work plan for the Parks and Community Services Commission, the council tasked the commission to review and update that policy. The PCS Commission started that process on August 14th through 2025, realizing that they needed further clarification and direction from council, which was received on September 2nd. On September 11th, the PCS reviewed and revised the Community Grant Program Policy before you this evening, making the following key changes. One, they clarified roles and responsibilities between the commission and the council and the process on awarding those grant funds. Two, they made the policy easier to digest and understand, not only just for staff, but for the commission and for community groups. Three, they required, they brought further clarification around what was an American Canyon nonprofit and made that clear that it was just a 501(c). Additionally, they removed the 70% resident restriction, and instead, they required the program to be based in American Canyon and that that program, service, or event needed to benefit the American Canyon community. They broadened what the funds could be used for instead of restricting to one-time events. And then lastly, allowing for groups to apply for multiple grants for different things throughout the year. It's also important to note that the commission requested several additional changes. One, they wanted to add in a non-discrimination requirement to the policy, which has been added before you this evening. They also wanted to make sure that the application was narrative-based. We didn't feel that that was needed to add into the policy. That will be added as part of the application process. And then lastly, they wanted to make sure, as well as part of the application, to include the board members and the primary contacts. So, staff joins with the commission on recommending the approval and the adoption of the updated Community Grant Program Policy before you this evening. That concludes my staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Allie, for your presentation. And any clarifying questions from council? Vice Mayor.
Just one that I had brought up earlier with the city manager, and that relates to those organizations that aren't a 501(c)(3) but might team up with one as a fiscal sponsor. And, you know, using an example close to home, the Arts Foundation is a 501(c)(3). We partner with Brenda Night Events to put on Juneteenth. So, the first question is, there isn't any reference to that fiscal sponsorship, but I'm not so sure it needs to be there, just as long as it's understood that that is an alternative. If you're just an organization and you want to be requesting funding, that's the mechanism through a fiscal sponsor. And then the other question is, and I think you've addressed it, whether we're limited to just one application or, you know, whether we could ask for something for Juneteenth and something for something else, recognizing that the PCS Commission might solve that by saying, "We'll give you this, but you're on your own for everything else." But just those two areas of clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Joseph. So, the policy's written broadly enough that doesn't... There isn't anything written in the policy that wouldn't allow for the commission to consider a group for them to award multiple grant funding for multiple projects that they would find that would benefit the community. For instance, if the Arts Foundation applied for a grant for Juneteenth, because we know that's an annual ongoing event, and we know that's something that's important to this community. There's cultural value. And then there's something else that the Arts Foundation wanted to do in addition to that. There's nothing in the policy that would prohibit the commission from reviewing that or even considering granting approval of those or a recommendation of those funds being recommended to council for those grant funds moving forward.
No other questions from council? We'll open it up for public comment, if any. Madam Clerk.
I have no cards and no one online.
Okay. I will close public comment and return to council for a resolution or a motion for a resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025, Resolution of the City Council, the City of American Canyon, adopting the updated Community Grant Program Policy.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a second. Can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Lametina?
Yes.
Councilman... Sorry, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lametina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
And Mayor Washington.
Yes. Our second business item is item number 14, Staff Positions for Sustainability. Oh, and thank you, Allie, for sustainability. And our presenter will be?
You got me, Mayor.
Mr. Holly.
Over here. You got me.
Could've done better, man.
The item tonight was requested by council at your last meeting. There was an interest amongst the council related to resources to deal with sustainability issues. There was a request to look at some part-time temporary staffing options. And so, staff has gone back and now have looked at some potential job descriptions that we have. And those are shown in your attachments, starting with Attachment 2. So, in, I think maybe the chart, starting on page 53 and page 54 of the staff report kind of summarizes it. There are two potential part-time job classifications that might be a fit. One is a program coordinator. It's an entry-level position typically found in our Park and Recreation Department. And then our second one is a management aide position. This is usually a more experienced individual. Oftentimes, we use a retired person who tends to come in and do specific projects and things. And the higher pay rate reflects that. These are both part-time and benefited, not exempt positions. We also listed a couple of full-time positions. One of them, entry-level, we call our sustainability coordinator position, although if you look at the job description, it's much more heavily focused on water conservation. In the past, it's been funded mostly with the Water Fund. So, it's sort of a little bit of a misnomer, actually, with the job title, but has sustainability elements to it, as does the management analyst position. Doesn't have anything specifically related to sustainability, but it's a broad enough classification that it can pretty much do anything that you're assigned. Much more at the advanced level, though, kind of a journeyman, college degrees, experience, that sort of thing. So, we wanted to be responsive to council's request by presenting some of these options. One of the thoughts that we had is making sure that we are aligning with the city's strategic work plan, and that's what shows up in Attachment 3. We have a sustainability goal, environmental sustainability goal, which is to demonstrate leadership in environmental sustainability, and a couple of strategies and key initiatives for this current fiscal year. And they're listed here in the staff report, but I won't bother to read all of them. So, presumably, this person would be working on some of that along with maybe some items that aren't identified in the work plan. But we wanted to kind of orient ourselves to what the council had agreed upon in April and May, as far as the work plan for '25, '26. To go forward with the program coordinator option, staff understood the request for this position to be inside the city manager's department, which is a function of our budgeting process. So, currently, there's no funds budgeted for a part-time staff within the city manager's department, but this resolution would add part-time... It would add funding, appropriate funding, within the part-time line item in the city manager's budget, roughly 1,000 hours at $30,000. Or, sorry, $30 an hour times 1,000. That's roughly how you get to 30,000. We wouldn't want to use quite that many hours, but around the part-time staffing piece. So, that's kind of where that number came from. If the council wanted to increase that, we certainly could. If the council was really interested in a full-time position, probably ought to have a deeper conversation about how we go about adding staff and what we have staff doing. One of the benefits of part-time staff, intermediate-term staff versus full-time staff is the temporary nature, meaning in and out of a budget process, part-time staff can be budgeted one year and not budgeted the next year, and then they no longer work for the city. It's not necessarily a large issue related to full-time staffing. You generally are now employed with the city unless there's layoffs or some other circumstances. So, part-time staff is easier to kind of come and go, and we, you know, are more flexible with how we bring them into the organization and whether they stay. So, just scanning back over the staff report. Like I said, it's not currently budgeted. The undesignated general fund balance is about 1.8 million. So, staff didn't go into a deep analysis about, you know, what other uses might be available for that 30,000, but it would come from that, from that undesignated balance. And if the council decides to go forward with this new position, we would do our various communication channels that we have for job announcements and job openings. And so, we would go out to the community and be looking to hire preferably somebody local here to fulfill this role. And it would be definitely an exploratory sort of effort. We have some idea what they might do, but it would definitely be a kind of feeling out period and figuring out what their best role would be. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Holly, and I appreciate the quick turnaround on getting this information. I think it was just the last council meeting that we mentioned it, so thank you.
That was your direction. So, we dropped other things and did this, yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Well, I too would like to thank staff for getting this back to us for some discussion. I think definitely this should be a temporary position, because there's a lot in play. The RCAP, Regional Climate Action and Adaptability Plan, is in the process of being approved. And after that, there'll be some discussion about what should the structure be. So, I think in the next year or two, a part-time temporary person will help American Canyon address some of the low-hanging fruit. And I think a temporary position is critical. Maybe in two or three years, we'll have a different take on how things play out. That may translate to, "We need a full-time person here." We may be sharing resources with a county-wide effort and so forth. So, for sure, it should be part-time and temporary. As to the position, I've been kind of an advocate of a program coordinator, maybe more so because my definition of a program coordinator isn't quite the same as what the current job description is. And basically, a program coordinator has to have a high school degree, or maybe not even that. I would prefer somebody with some college education, ideally in environmental studies or something in that category. I hope there are people that are passionate and informed and gung-ho to help us. So, I do think we'll find someone, hopefully, living here. I would also like to ask that we use some of the OSAT commissioners in some fashion in that recruitment to either get the word out, maybe sit in on an interview panel, so that they have a little more of a buy-in on who they're looking for. Because in a lot of respects, this person is going to be doing a lot of things that OSAT is responsible for accomplishing. And so, those are my two thoughts on the subject.
Thank you. Quick question, Mr. Holly. Did you give any consideration to like internships as well? Students who are in college studying in this field that would probably benefit through an internship?
I did not include the... We have a... We do have a job classification that says intern. And I did not include that in the packet. In some sense, intern, program coordinator, temporary, and even management aide are... They're just varying levels of experience within that same vein. So, we can go back and look at the intern one, and that might make some sense, too, particularly what Vice Mayor Joseph was talking about. I don't recall offhand what the pay rate is for that. I doubt it's much different than what the program coordinator is. So, you know, I think we can be a little creative in how we do this recruitment. We're sort of looking for a person. And where we fit them in as far as internship versus coordinator versus management aide is... Except management aide doesn't have to be a retiree. It's just generally more, they have work experience. They're generally, you know, a more seasoned type employee rather. A program coordinator is literally entry-level. So, that's, we have to use the definitions that we have in our human resources disposal. So, you know, so whereas intern, sorry, can kind of be a little bit in the middle of that. So, we'll go back and look at that one. And the most, the resolution doesn't actually specify... The resolution kind of assumes part-time. It doesn't actually specify job classification. What it does is appropriate a certain budget amount. So, you know, if, for example, we end up finding someone that was a little bit higher rate, we would just use less hours. We're not talking large swings of money. If we ended up going with the program coordinator, it might be a little more hours. So, we would stay within what is the, what's in the resolution for the budget. So, we'll go back and look at the intern one.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, I remember, last time we talked about this, it was a job about educating the public. And now, it's further into the city's sustainability goal and strategic work plan. What exactly is planned for this temporary role?
It's a good question. Councilmember Oro, you know, this item was responding to the council's request from two weeks ago. So, sorry, three weeks ago. So, admittedly, we haven't spent a lot of time figuring out what their, you know, first-to-do list of what the things that they would be doing. I think generally, you know, this first bullet point related to researching methodology, tracking carbon footprint at city facilities, that is certainly something that's in our work plan for this year. Some of these other things are already in place, but, you know, helping us with this scope of work for this regional shoreline adaption plan. We've got some consultants involved, but they might help us compile that. We're looking for some grant fund... We're looking for some grant funding, so they might help us with that application. So, you know, it's, some of these bullet points are going to help with. We might have them, you know, depending on their aptitude and things, take a look at the RCAP and tell us what's in it. You know, quite frankly, this is a plan that's been done at the county level by county staff and county consultants. Brent's looked at it, I've looked at it, but we haven't done, you know, a deep dive on it. I couldn't tell you how many pages it is or all the different things in it. So, you know, we'll probably have them, you know, what's in the plan? You know, can, like, just put a cheat sheet together, what are those things, who's doing what with things in the city, so that, that sort of thing. It's going to depend a little bit on the level of, you know, the skill set. But we generally are, you know, with this position, trying to orient around the work plan that the council adopted. It's got a hundred and some odd, a hundred and thirteen, I think it is, key initiatives for the year. So, you know, we weren't, we weren't seeing this as an opportunity to say, now we're adding to the work plan through some other thing. We said, okay, what's in our work plan now with this list of a hundred and three? Where might this line up? What are the kinds of things that they might do? So hopefully that answers your question.
Does staff need this position?
I don't know. That's a sort of interesting question. The item tonight is in response to what the council had requested. Does, so staff isn't bringing this forward. I mean, we're, we're not bringing this because we saw a need and said, hey, council, staff is seeing a need, here's what you should consider. We're bringing it because at the end of the last council meeting, the council said, literally, bring this at our next meeting, and so we're, we're doing that. Some of these items, so we, we prepared this strategic plan, the twenty-five, twenty-six strategic work plan, and these items were not prepared, they're prepared in consideration of those things being done, not assuming there would be new resources and staff. So we, we felt like these items, we would track them and try to get them accomplished in the fiscal year, not assuming there'd be new staff. The addition of staff will help them get completed, you know, more, either sooner or more, with maybe more of a likelihood. You know, not all of the hundred and thirteen or so key initiatives are all going to reach their completion in the fiscal year. And so the addition of a part-time staff will make it more likely that one or more of these will be completed than it wasn't going to. But we didn't prepare a plan and then come back later and go, okay, now we need more resources. We had, we developed a staffing plan during the budget process and aligned it with the strategic plan. So we're not bringing this. This is a response to the council item. This additional staffing will help get additional things done.
Maybe to further answer your question, there's a government code position. It's government code two-one-two-two-four subsection A that pertains to the employment that a PERS annuitant can accept. And it's, it's really narrow. It's got to be a temporary position. It can't exceed nine-hundred-and-sixty hours in a year. And it's usually reserved when a city has a need. You need somebody to come in temporarily, not to occupy a permanent staff position. That's a no-no under PERS for an annuitant. But there's this very narrow code section, so it is actually helpful to have created a, a few cities do it, you're forward-thinking to do it. But it's helpful to have a temporary classification that a PERS annuitant can occupy for the position of extra help. When you don't have that and you have a need, you've got to search around for, oh, gosh, what am I going to call this person? What's the salary set? But in this case, you're creating a classification in advance should you ever need it, and PERS will understand that. So if, if that's helpful, that's some.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I get the PERS and annuity stuff before. I'm just questioning, do we need this when it's a council directive? And I'm still trying to figure out exactly what they're doing. I'm being asked to vote on something that I'm not too sure what they're voting on. The issue that you just brought up as a policy, be great to have that, but I don't know if it's for this position, if it's for an open position that we might need later on, particularly to help staff, then, you know, that, that'd be more consideration for me. I wasn't even thinking about annuities. I was just thinking about the role and the position and what they would be doing and how it would help.
Yeah, just to be clear, we have the management aide classification already. So that's, she's saying it's forward-thinking that we already have this classification, we can fill it.
Understood, okay.
If you need it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, I, I think, from my perspective, if we look at the, our milestones for this year, strategy ES3, collaborate with partners to reduce climate pollutants, increase community usage of the Napa County Climate Challenge App, work with Bayren and others to promote retrofitting older homes to be more energy-efficient. Those two projects in, in particular, as well as researching methodology to track the carbon footprint at city facilities, or just, or properly disposing of waste at city facilities, those are the kinds of projects I could see this person focusing on. I could see them working with MCE and others to identify funding sources that they should be able to put together in the form of a grant and probably bring in additional funds for specific programs. The other point, if we recall, when we were working with work plans for OSATs, one of the work items was to address some of the low-hanging fruit as it relates to climate action. And in my mind, this part-time person, that's the closest thing to a, why would we bring this person on? As Commissioner Christian pointed out, OSAT's role used to be very much of a hands-on working committee. When we transitioned it to a full-fledged commission, the understanding was, we don't want you to be that hands-on person. And so I think it behooves us to give them some temporary resources to help address, again, the low-hanging fruit, improving, you know, retrofitting homes, talking to Yvonne Boginsky about how she was able to do her thing at little or no cost. There's a lot of opportunities out there, and it mostly needs a warm body to help, you know, connect the public to the resource and help them through that process. So those, that's the kind of role I see this person doing. And I think, you know, I think if we approve it and we get the right person, we're going to be very proud of ourselves and consider that we really are demonstrating leadership in environmental sustainability, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And did you say Yvonne was going to apply for that?
No.
I thought you said Yvonne.
She might, but I just highlighting her, her point that she was able, I guess she did it without the help of this person, but was able to actually retrofit her home, reduce her carbon footprint, and actually not necessarily add to her bills, so it's a good thing.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yeah, to piggyback on Councilmember Joseph, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit. I'm compiling a list right now, Jason. And, but there's a lot of things this person can do, mostly just educating our community, reminding people where to put your compostables, your garbage, your recycling, pick up your litter, you know, move out of using plastics and move into glass. I mean, it can go on and on and on, just to help our communities. So I think it's a very important position, and that's really all I have to say right now, but stay tuned.
Yeah, I'll add to that as well. I know that we had the joint commission meeting, and I purposely asked the commissioners what they thought, and they, they all kind of, you know, one hundred percent said they thought there was, there would be some value in that, so, that position. So I know that that was why you brought it back to here so quickly, and I appreciate, again, like I said earlier, that turnaround. But at this point, I'd like to open up the public comment for any public comment on item number fourteen.
I have Yvonne Boginsky.
Hello, hello again. I'm Yvonne Boginsky, and I was going to throw in my two cents worth. I think this is a very, very important position, and I know that the other cities in Napa County have sustainable positions or positions very similar to this one. I think this would be a big step forward for the city of American Canyon. Five years ago, I was working in elder care. Five years now, they have passed, and I'm working in an entirely different field as a volunteer, but there is a learning curve. That's why I would recommend that you make it a management-type position with someone who has environmental experience, someone who's educated, who has a college degree, someone who can step into the role with confidence, especially if they're going to be working with consulting firms and grants. But sitting down and doing a very complete job description with qualifications is really important. I also think you need to up the salary a little more than thirty dollars an hour. I saw, that's, that's really why I'm here, the thirty dollars, the thirty thousand dollar salary. And I said, you know, I pay my housekeeper and my garden or thirty dollars an hour when they come and clean up my house, and I think this should be a professional position, because these, whoever would have this position would have to report to you, would have to show up at these meetings, and would have to have a professional demeanor in the community, and would have to have a lot of integrity. So I'm recommending that you go forward with this position, and, and I think this would, and I agree, this would provide a very sustainable leadership role for American Canyon. So thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Mayor, I just wanted to add one point. The commenter kind of jostled something in my brain. And I know Vice Mayor Joseph had a different idea in mind about a certain position. These are the job descriptions we have today. Part of the council direction was on a particular job description. We brought that back. None of them completely line up, I think, right now with maybe what the council has in mind. So although I didn't cover it in the staff report, another scenario, would you, would you be giving me maybe a little more feedback on what you want this position to do? And we would craft a job description, and we'd bring that back to you, and then we'd do recruitment. So I'm not trying to delay things, I'm just saying, that's, if none of these four are the kind of, kind of hit the mark from a job description perspective, and we do have to, to the commenter's point, we do have to have a job description that matches the work we're asking them to do. And, you know, I'm not sure that the, certainly the program coordinator as listed here wouldn't be coming to city council and giving presentations. That's, that's very entry-level. We wouldn't expect that out of, that would be at a much higher level. So i- if the council isn't seeing from these existing four something that you like, let me know that, give me some guidance, and we could create one, either part-time or full-time that you do like. So that, that's a possibility. We understood the council to be sort of, we'll sort of figure this out as a go, and a program coordinator's close enough, and so that's why we wrote the resolution we did. It has the pay scale it does, because these are entry-level positions in park and recreation. So that's, that's why we did that.
Yeah, and in, in your defense, I must say that I know that you and I had a conversation, and you actually thought that the council was talking about a leadership role similar to what Yvonne was talking about initially, when we first brought it up. So I know we had that conversation as well.
Yeah, we did. And to be clear, you know, that was one of the, the things we grappled with privately, was, you know, none of these positions, absent except maybe the, the management analyst position, is going to be really exerting leadership into the organization. It's not described that way, it's not part of their characteristics, it's not part of their experience, and it's not their pay scale to be exerting leadership. And so we went forward with what the directive was from council, but, you know, those sort of characteristics aren't in here, and I don't want you to be of the impression that it is. But leadership, you know, is going to come from the top-down for myself and from department heads. So we would take information they give us, and we would give presentations and that sort of thing, same thing at OSATs. So I just wanted to be clear on how, why these job descriptions are in here, why we don't have one that's perfectly maybe curated for exactly what you have in mind, and, you know, the situation as at the current moment.
Thank you, Mr. Hawley. Continue with the public comment. Any other public comment?
I have Nance Mattson.
Good evening, Nance.
Hi, Nance Mattson, I believe I'm a resident tonight. I'm really glad that you brought this up. I unfortunately wasn't able to be at that meeting, but I listened to it, and I was very happy that you decided to bring this forward tonight. Working in energy research all my career, I've worked with interns, I've worked with new college grads, I've worked with PhDs. This job is something that we haven't figured out what it's exactly going to be and where it's going to, I think you've figured out where it's going to live, right? It's going to live with you? Okay.
Yeah, it's certain, the, the, just to, I don't mean to interrupt, the, the resolution appropriates funds within the city manager department, so yes.
Yeah, okay. So I was really happy to see these different options. And one thing I want to say, how I, I don't know how to, can I talk as OSAT's chair or not? I just want to make sure. My experience in observing open space at OSATs is working with the various department heads and city manager. That dance has been going really well, but we haven't had the sustainability part of it yet. And I think having an employee who is leading the sustainability effort for the city, whether, however that's defined, is going to help, OSAT's going to help city council, city staff, make a path forward in that area. When I look at these, actually, the last part of the, the statement here said, lastly, there's no staff assigned to open space or OSATs. Perhaps this person could also be that person. I don't know if, if city staff needs that at this time, but it was an interesting idea. And also thinking about the education levels, you do need a college graduate, because often you'll have somebody that's new to the field, they need a mentor. I don't think we have that right now, in terms of city staff, as wonderful as they are. So I'd like to see us get somebody that has enough information and experience into the belt that they can help us lead in this area. So what else do I have to say? I have lots of notes. In the past, we've had some people come to the city who have taken the lead on getting grants. So if we have somebody of higher level education, maybe they can find grants so we can get more information out to the residents. And this job is not defined yet. Are they going to work on city infrastructure? Are they going to work with the residents? We've got to figure that out. And I like the idea of having OSATs involved. And I, I don't know how that works, because OSATs is supposed to be providing direction, not direction, not direction to staff, but policy. So city staff and council do decide how OSATs can be involved, but we have a number of commissioners with a lot of experience. So I believe that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Nance.
I have no other cards.
And no one online? Thank you. So we'll close. Public comment on item fourteen. Return to council for additional statements, questions, or a motion.
Well, I guess at, at the broadest level, I'm certainly supportive of the resolution which authorizes, you know, thirty thousand dollars in wages. Then the second half is, what are we looking for? And I, you know, the management aide classification is certainly a little more of the professional nature. Certainly, it, it's designed maybe for an annuitant, but not necessarily. And that may be the best way to start, simply because it is something, it is a position that is expected to have some kind of formal college degree and education. I guess in my mind, I see this as more of a working position than necessarily a leadership position. And so I wouldn't necessarily want to get a retired environmental sustainability manager because their orientation might not be, I'm going to roll up my sleeves and go out and knock on doors and, and do that. And so you, you may end up hiring somebody who's incredibly qualified and has decided that over the years, they're no longer the worker bee, they're the manager bee. And I don't know if we're ready for a manager bee yet. So I think the management aide, there's all kinds of Bs. So I do think something, someone with more of a college degree background, not necessarily at the end of their career, could be somebody fresh out of college who's got passion and gung-ho. But, you know, you're right, there isn't a job description that encompasses all of that. But on the other hand, I think if staff has a good understanding of what we're looking for, and in my mind, if we use OSATs, you know, have an OSAT commissioner sit in and interview some of the candidates with staff, that might be an effective way of getting buy-in at both ends. And that may also help kind of get the right kind of person. Because a lot of this is, at the end of the day, if you hire a really good person, it really doesn't matter what their title is, they're going to do an outstanding job. And if you hire a dud, it doesn't matter what you call him, they're not going to be very good. So that's my, my critique of HR. Thank you.
Mayor, just a, a couple of things. The way that we're sort of looking at that, I guess, the way that I'm, it means to me the way I'm sort of looking at this, is what's on the table here is thirty thousand dollars. And do I know exactly what this person would be doing? I don't, I have some ideas. And, you know, if the council wants to move forward, I would take that spend and try to deliver on some things that are in the work plan and some other things, and have you guys be happy. And, you know, at, at the end of May or so, June, we'll go, okay, was that worth it? Do we get those things accomplished or not? You know, it's, it's, we're two, three months into the year, four months into the year now, so, you know, we're going to try and evolve some of these things. I'm not I'm not viewing it, you know, as if we don't get XYZ done, it's gonna be a failure. I'm gonna say, you know, we're gonna hire a person, we're gonna do, try to get some things done, and we'll know at the end of that time period, you know, whether it was successful or not, if that's the direction that the council, you know, wants to go. As far as who might be in the interview process, we won't be including someone based on their assignment to a commission, but we do happen to have a group who, we know what their resumes look like, and we, it's not uncommon to have an external panel, for example, or external folks sit in an interview panel. So, their, being on a commission isn't going to be the criteria, but the fact that someone has a bunch of experience that might be useful in an interview panel, might be a reason to bring in an outside person to be part of our raters in our system. So, that's how we would kind of work that from, from the HR side of things. So, it's not uncommon to, to bring in an outside raider to help staff with its rating process.
And if I can just add to that, the fact that it is a temporary, part-time position, I think the implication is we're, we're experimenting. If this were a full-time, permanent position, you know, that's a much more serious commitment and I think there has to be a lot more time and thought. As a temporary position, you know, find out what the markets can offer, and if it works, great, if it doesn't work, they're temporary, part-time people and you can, you know, we can kind of refine the process as we go along.
Yeah, and just to add on that, I, I would not recommend going down the full-time route. I included that information because it's fair for you to have all the options, but I wouldn't recommend, at least at this point, doing that for reasons that you articulated, Vice Mayor. But also, like, we're in the middle, we're in the middle of a year, that's not typically when we do positions, and you would want to have a job description that matches what you want to do and you want to know what you want that person to do. You wouldn't want to be kind of wide open, that would not be a good practice. So, it wouldn't be my recommendation to do the full-time. I think it would be better to look at one of the part-time pieces and, and to be frank, the resolution doesn't say which part-time, you know, which classification, it just has the appropriation and, you know, and, and some general guidance on what you want this person to accomplish. So, I think we could do that, but it's, it's up to the council if that's how you want the spend to go.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Still, return to council for a motion, or not?
Well, I'll, because we're specifically doing a, an appropriations, I will make a motion that we, I'm gonna see if I can, oh, here we are. I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2025, next in order, a resolution of the city council of the City of American Canyon, California, amending the fiscal year 2526 budget to increase line item 100-10-120-41120 wages part-time by $30,000 to add part-time limited personnel in the city managers department in furtherance of the city's sustainability goal and strategic work plan.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a second, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
No.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
And Mayor Washington?
Yes. Now, we'll move on to our management staff report, item number 15, public works utility update. Erica?
Good evening, mayor, council, City of American Canyon residents. I'm trying to get the slideshow going on here.
There you go. The fourth, the fourth one from the end, like, the icon, that.
Right here? I don't have to do this quite.
Oh, shoot. Hold on. Here it comes.
Wow, okay, that didn't do it. Excuse me. The icons usually there is not.
It's just the slideshow one, right?
I was working on that, we don't do that yesterday anyhow. I'm just giving you the past 90 days of what we've completed or we're accomplishing here in the American Canyon. I, I don't usually particularly read everything on here, but we have seven active projects right now. Two are substantially completed, which is the Rancho Del Mar paving utility improvements and the North Hampton shade structure that was mentioned earlier this evening. Melvin sidewalk drainage project is still underway, mostly the storm drain installation, they got completed at the fire station a couple of weeks ago. And the wetlands edge enhancement project, we're just waiting for the delivery of the outdoor shade structure and, not shade structure, but the educational area and pavilion, as well as the bathrooms. We're working on a change order to do weed barrier, was not recommended as part of the project from our landscape architect, but if you've been out there, there's quite a few weeds, even though they're doing weed management. So, we're looking at adding that back into it, even though, against the recommendations of our consultant, but just that we know, it's gonna be a headache with, with the long-term maintenance of vegetation onsite and just getting a commercial-grade weed barrier fabric out there and reapplying the mulch. In addition, we have the Green Island Road reconstruction project and widening project, it's well underway. There, if you haven't been out there in a while, Hannah Way is getting new sidewalks that didn't have any before. There's, there was a sidewalk gap in the industrial district, which is from Commerce up to Hess, so, it's nice to have that, at least one side of Hannah Way will now have sidewalks, and they're, of course, working on the water main replacement out there. We're discussing potential shutdown of weekend work. We've already called, made, our project manager, Ron Renato, who's senior civil engineer for the City of American Canyon, is called, coordinated the businesses and doing full weekend closures at Mazetta Court and Commerce Court. Discussions on that are still underway, but that gives them the access to get in there and get out of there and not take so much longer, it's like ripping the banding off, get work done in three nights over the weekend or three, 54 hours, like ongoing construction, and do two separate weekends on that. So, that's exciting, that's more to come with communications. And then, looking at advertising and award for construction, North Hampton shade structure, of course, was purchased for materials on hand and that's been installed. We awarded the SCADA upgrades at the water treatment plant and work has commenced out there, as well as the water reclamation, that has been well underway for the last few months. Under design, North Hampton Park restroom was completed, the Silver Oak, Silver Oak Park restroom designs, utilities being brought to the site, was completed. The East American Canyon Road guardrail project design currently is at 100%. South Kelly and Highway 29 will still, is still under design. There'll be quite a bunch of work. One of our goals, initiatives this year is to get the Caltrans permit submitted for approval. And then the Melvin Park tennis courts, we, is, is ongoing. In the next 90 days, completion of the Rancho Del Mar, we assign striping punch list items. Melvin sidewalk drainage project, completing the storm drain, signage and substantial completion, the traffic calming that goes actually on Melvin. Wetlands edge environmental education pending, substantial completion, pending delivery of the actual structures and installation of them. Green Island Road will be ongoing for quite a few more months. North Hampton Park restroom, the anticipation of advertising and award that project. Silver Oak Park restroom to be packaged with North Hampton, we talked about splitting those out as separate, but it'll likely be better as a, as a complete project with two different locations. The city hall roof replacement, roof replacement will start on October 20th, and then the SCADA upgrades at both the water reclamation facility and the water treatment plant will be ongoing. And we anticipate advertising and award of construction contracts of American Canyon East Road Guardrail Project, and again, the park restrooms. Advertising Veterans Park, or at least completing design, we, we keep going back and forth with the Sourcewell contract, Miracle Play. Director, or Deputy City Manager Akata is working, taking lead on that as far as what design elements we want to see at the park, and then advertising the Melvin Park tennis courts. And in design, of course, Green Island Road Class 1 Trail, that's, ooh, is that outdated? Looking to, to determine the best time to advertise that project. We want to kind of give a little more leeway on the Green Island Road construction before we get a new contractor. We have six months from our E76 that was awarded or approved by Caltrans a couple of months ago, so, probably go to advertise in, in December, January timeframe and hopefully get started later by the summer. South Kelly and Highway 29, again, ongoing, and complete design of the Broadway sewer SS4 contract, and we're looking at packaging the Andrews sewer repair with that project. This includes the sewer crossing from, from Home 2 Suites. The citywide pavement rejuvenation project, Cape Seal will be in design, Rancho Del Mar Phase 2, we're, keep getting inquiries on that, and update on there, we keep getting asked from Justin Hamilton-Hole when we're gonna complete the sidewalks, and that is gonna be part of the Rancho Phase 2 project. So, it's only about 400 feet of segment a project, or sidewalk, but since it's part of the Rancho Del Mar Phase 2, we're gonna, similarly, as we did with Rancho Phase 1, is close the sidewalk gaps. And Main Street Park ADA upgrades, and then, which is the new switchbacks down into the park as well as steps from Main Street, the new Melvin Park RFP, and then wetlands restoration and public access go out to RFP as well in the next 90 days. So, a lot of work going on, city staff managing a lot, all of them are, it's, it's, we're continuing to put out great work and, and great teamwork effort in coordination with all the divisions and departments. A lot of work with communications, parks and recreation, of course, finance, and we utilize quite a bit of our utility team and also our streets team with potholing some of the utilities before we get out there, so, great team effort. And I guess this is how we're gonna show you our presentation tonight, just some pictures of the work that's completed. I hope everyone saw the video online of the aerials of some of the work taking place on Rancho, it was very exciting seeing that, great video. Again, more construction completed. Green Island Road, here we are, pouring sidewalks on Hannah Drive and then doing the water main work. And then Melvin Road, continued sidewalk work and storm drain work. And then, again, storm drain work. Wetlands Edge, there you can see some of those weeds that we're talking about earlier, but it looks really good out there. I, you know, I was walking out there Friday, it's just, it's gonna be beautiful when that all gets settled in, I'm excited to see the trees around the picnic benches.
Director, Smiths, you mentioned this is on hold, I think you probably talked through that, but?
Yes.
Can you remind me again, because you were going through a lot there?
We're waiting for the delivery of the structures. So, the, the bathroom is actually a modular structure, so, once it's completed, it'll be brought in on truck and then craned in to its, its future location and stub, the utilities are already stubbed out, so, that'll just be plum and play. And then, oops, that was in.
I got it.
Oh, you figured it out?
Well, I'm screening it from here, I was able to open it, so.
And then the.
Just tell me where to, where you are.
Wetlands Edge, so, and then the, the outdoor education center pavilion, that will need to be installed, that's, again, a fabricated piece of, you know, structure that then has to be brought to the site. Concrete, I think, believe that one with the weight was making sure the concrete was all cured, that'll be brought to the site and then erected by the contractor, so.
I'm sorry, Erica, are you past this one?
Yes.
Okay, let me get, tell me when, keep going.
There we go, you can go on to the next one now.
Okay.
And then North Hampton Shade, if you guys saw some of the construction, it's just awesome to see that out there as you drive by or if you stop and visit. Next? I think that was it, so, there we go.
Just some time.
Lot going on. That was probably the easiest project. Once we picked the shade structure and the colors and agreed on everything, that was the easiest win.
Man, thank you for that update, Erica, there's a lot of stuff, like you said, that's going on, so, thank you and your crew and your team, everybody else, for what they're doing. And questions or, or concerns from the council, starting with Vice Mayor Joseph?
On the North Hampton Shade, it, it's only got one picnic table, is, and I know it's not, it's got the bench seedings too. Is there a way that we can get more picnic tables under that shade? Or is that the intent?
There are some on order. And they take quite a long time to get here, so. There's already been discussion, I'm not sure if we allocate, I think we had remaining funds in this project, so we could allocate additional to there, and I gotta confirm whether those did indeed get ordered.
Okay.
But there was question, can we get some more under there now? Yeah.
Okay, well, then, I'm adding to the list. It sounds, it sounds like you've got it under control, thank you. Yeah, it just looks like, well, it, it's great to see Rancho Phase 2, I know at least one person who will be happy. And it looks like the Cape Seal is gonna be down at the south end of town.
Montevideo somewhere.
Montevideo, et cetera. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see when all these projects are finished out, what that does to our pavement condition index. By rights, it ought to jump about five or 10 points, but.
I would hope Green Island Road starts getting paved. As you, we're, we're in the, our year for inspection, so, they have not kicked that off yet, so they have not had the inspection, so it's exciting to have Knightsbridge done, Rancho, and Montevideo won't be done, but I doubt Green Island Road will be done, but it'd be nice if some of the pavement was down, so it helps improve our scores.
Same here, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? See you none, thank you, Erica.
All right.
Any other, anything else, Mr. Holly?
Staff, do we have any other management reports? Okay, I think we're good. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move to our mayor and council comments and committee reports, starting with you, Vice Mayor.
Well, I apologize, I completely zoned out and didn't get a written report in, and because it was involving three or four different organizations, I will put it together and submit it and it'll just be part of next cycle. And I do want to point out, I will be out of town this weekend, therefore I can't make it to Manila Munchies. I am not, you know, I just want to let everybody know I can't be there, even though this is the second year that I'd like to be there, 'cause I like Manila Munchies, so, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Oro?
You didn't make the first one, so how would you know you liked Manila Munchies?
I'm just basing, I'm assuming if they have any kind of Filipino food there, I know I would have liked it, so it's just a matter of, if there's food, I like it, it's, what can I say?
Well, I mean, I don't have anything to report, but I will report that I too am out of town and I'll miss the second Manila Munchies, not the first, so. It ain't really Filipino, man. No, I'm just messing. Councilmember Lamatina?
I will be at Manila Munchies for the second year in a row. And also, I didn't have enough time to put in my report for climate, so I'll get that in and, yeah, just busy with everything going on. And Erica, I am loving Rio Del Mar, I no longer bump my coffee all over me, so, thank you, I appreciate that.
For me, I, I did submit my committee report, but two things I'd like to really highlight was the Citizens Academy that we had, we had a really good turnout. Our city manager did an excellent job with the orientation, so, it's always good to see new members of our community coming to learn more about the city government and how we process things, so, did an amazing job. And what even, was even more of a highlight was the opportunity to have Donaldson Way second grade class come to the, to the city hall and just walk around and just see the future leaders of our community, smiling and laughing and joking. That was something that warmed my heart tremendously for the whole time, ever since that had occurred, and I encourage that to happen more often, you know, see our little people who are our future. So, with that said, let me go to future agenda items, if any. Do any of us have future agenda items to submit? No, no, and no? Okay, then, that makes it easy. Then we have completed, completed our business for this evening and we are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon.